Okay, I have your attention please. I'm going to call the meeting to order and would everybody please stand to say the pledge of allegiance. Okay, I'd like to make a couple comments before we start, alright? I'm going to give anyone who has questions two minutes. Statements or questions. We were given a handout which had various options for different buildings and things that is informational only, not to be discussed for this meeting, that was just so you would have that. Mike DiFallo is going to come up and give a quick read on the property that we're looking at purchasing and it was put together by Peter Hamm who's an expert and very good with antique houses and restoration.
Hi, my name is Mike DiFallo, I'm on this staff with Commissioner Town. Mr. Hamm wasn't able to be here tonight, so I was asked to read this on his behalf. I'm not a expert or even a pseudo-expert in architecture, so if you have any questions when I'm done, the Chair will refer you to the correct person to answer it. Please bear with me, it's gonna be about five minutes, I know that can be long. On August 20th, 2025, Mr. Hamm took a brief tour of the Jesse Hitzback House. Based on a limited inspection, his observations are noted below. Please note that these observations are cursory in nature and not a substitute for a full inspection by a structural engineer or licensed home inspector. Overall, the exterior of the house has been well-maintained and in good condition. The roof is in excellent condition as are all three chimneys, including the chimney flashing. The foundation is primarily dry weight stone that has been mortared and reinforced over time. It is in good shape with no apparent signs of structural instability. The walled clapper siding is in good condition. The paint on the main part of the house has been stripped and stained recently, while the trim, windows, and all of the L remain painted. It is likely that wet paint, fake paint remains on many of the painted surfaces. The windows are in fair condition and are protected by tight-fitting triple-track storm windows. Window replacement is not recommended. The existing wood windows will last indefinitely if protected by storm windows and properly maintained. In general, the framing for the house is better than expected for a 20-year-old house. Repairs and reinforcements have been made over the years, some better than others. A full examination of the framing was impossible due to insulation covering floor joists in the basement and the rafters in the attic. Other framing members are covered by interior finishes. There will likely be a need for additional repair and reinforcement of framing members when the house is restored. This is normal and expected for a house of this age. Steel jack posts in the basement should be removed and replaced with concrete-filled steel posts to meet code. Additional posts may be required as directed by an architect or engineer. These posts are easily installed and generally not costly. The insulation around the attic rafters should be inspected to be sure that the roof cords are ventilated. If not, the insulation should be removed to prevent condensation and potential damage to the roof structure. The interior finishes are generally quite good. As work progresses to transform the space from a residence to offices, additional work will be required. Kitchen and bathrooms will eventually need to be upgraded to meet the needs of a working office. Starred space will be required both in existing closets and accessory spaces in the L. A full eye will be required to make sure the renovated building will meet the requirements of the ADA. An action ramp will be required. The side door provides a good space for no unobtrusive ramp. Interior doors and frames will need to be widened as required. Variances to the prescribed clearances adjacent to doors and hallways may be required. These are decided by the State Architectural Access Board through a formal petitioning process. Bathrooms will need to be remodeled to meet compliance standards. Eventually, an elevator or lift will be required if the second floor has offices open to the public. Existing heating, plumbing, and electrical systems are adequate, but require updating as the house is transformed to office space. The existing forced hot air heating system should be upgraded to meet current standards of comfort and efficiency required for office space. The second-floor heating scheme is inadequate as currently configured and will need to be upgraded before that space can be used. The plumbing will need to be upgraded as renovations are made to the bathrooms and kitchen. The electrical service should be upgraded as the space is transformed into offices and this may require new electrical panels or subpanels. Improvements should be made to insulation to improve comfort and energy efficiency. The septic system has recently been replaced and should be adequate for office use. In summary, the Jesse Hitzback House is in very good condition and is well-suited for adaptive reuse as an office space under the guidance of an architect. The lot size is sufficient, add parking as required, and the building will allow flexibility for growth over time. Thank you.
Ms. Kaprowski, okay, how many voters do we have here?
One hundred and ninety-seven.
Thank you. Now, does anyone need to practice with the voters before we start? Just make sure you push the button, there's an icon in the corner which should light up, you'll see that, and then we call for the vote, press yes or no. Make sure you're, I think they checked them all before when you came in to make sure it would light up and everything was good.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am. No, we haven't officially started yet. Do you want to test on the voters? Which do you prefer, yes for chocolate and no for peppermint? Make a choice, we're starting right now. So you folks have the screen up here, you can see what the vote was.
One eighty-nine.
One eighty-nine, total votes.
Two eighty-six is what we have.
We have one hundred and ninety-seven. So, almost everybody has voted. You need another test, are we good?
How many yes, how many no?
What's the result?
Now, when it comes time to vote, I'm gonna give you twenty seconds. That's more than we need, but that gives everybody a chance to think, you can change your vote, do whatever, okay?
So, is this working at all?
Yeah.
Alright, good evening, my name is Joe Baloo, I'm the chairperson of the Finance Committee. I just wanted to say that the Finance Committee is a seven-member volunteer board and we're all Brentfield homeowners and taxpayers just like you. The role of the Finance Committee is to review these one articles, we didn't write them, they're written by the petitioners, but our role is to review those, verify that there's a lead to be addressed, and then also that they're financially viable, so essentially we're telling you that yes, we can afford it or we can't. Because of this, the Finance Committee, I got the privilege of making the opening motions. And all my motions will be within the scope of the article, but we might actually recommend different amounts, and if we do, it doesn't have to be amended, but it also means that somebody else could make a follow-up motion. We're gonna, most of these items will be, are you guys in the back, can you guys hear me? So almost all of these items are gonna be funded by free cash, so I just wanna explain what that is really quick. There was a misunderstanding last time. We know it's not free, but it's a financial term in the Commonwealth to refer to funds that have been certified by the state to be free from incumbencies. We know it's not free, it's collected from the taxpayers in the previous fiscal year and then returned to the general fund. And sometimes that's state reimbursements and sometimes it's fees that were collected higher than we expected and sometimes it's town officials who return money at the end of the year. Free cash and capital state stabilization funds do not raise taxes and then require a majority vote. If we have to loan, a borrowing, I would pay two-thirds vote. But we also keep in mind, just because it's, you know, just because it's money that we have, we still wanna be careful with it, right? We still wanna be custodians of our money. And just keep in mind, any money that we spend now will not be available as free cash at the Inletown meeting next year, so just make sure we spend it wisely. After my motion, feel free to come to the microphone to ask questions. I may, if it's, we've been discussing these things for a long time, so I might be able to just quickly answer. If not, I may ask if the moderator, the petitioner would like to respond. Yeah, I wanted to mention, this town meeting was created specifically, you know, very quickly because this property was an opportunity that came up, so, you know, we had a big budget that was defeated in June and just so people know, this isn't like Plan B, this is separate, this is an opportunity for a property that came up and we had to act quickly, and that's why this meeting here is tonight. We also have, usually the Finance Committee during the year, it's hard to run a town because we only have, you people, all of us have to vote to spend money and we only do that once a year, so the Finance Committee has, you know, a reserve fund that you guys entrust us with and we pay smaller bills that come up during the year. Because it's a meeting, those bills will be brought up tonight in front of people instead of, you know, normally the Finance Committee may have addressed those, I won't explain that. So, let me just start with Article One. You guys, the mic is still working? I move that the select board is hereby authorized to purchase the property located at 19 Main Street, Brentfield, Massachusetts, zero-one-zero-one-zero, assessors parcel ID thirteen-alpha-A-five, described in a deed recorded with the Hampton County Writs of Deeds in Port one-one-six-three-one, page nine, and to do so by transferring the amount of six hundred thousand dollars from fiscal year 2026 certified free cash for said acquisition and classed incidentally related thereto. And further, that the select board is hereby authorized to sell, convey, lease, or otherwise dispose of the fee title or lesser interests in all or portion of said property for such consideration in or in such terms and conditions as the select board deems to be in the best interest of the town. And further, that the select board is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents and instruments necessary or convenient to carry out the purposes of this article.
Do I just send you the second? Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Okay, discussion. We have a second. Okay, now I would like to open this to the floor for questions or comments. If anyone has any, please come to the microphone, announce your name and your address, and please stick to the subject.
Frank Bofoli, Marshall Road. Does anybody know what the assessed valuation is of this property? Somebody from the assessors office here can tell us what the assessed value of this six hundred thousand dollar building is?
I can answer that. Mark and Kelly, Chair of the Board of Selectment here in town. We had an independent appraiser, go through and look at that, and it came back at like five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
That wasn't the question I asked, Mr. Kelly.
Alright.
What is the assessed valuation in the town of Brentfield?
They are not.
Would you speak out, please?
The assessed value is close to four hundred thousand dollars.
Close to four hundred thousand.
And you have to remember that assessed value is based on sales that are two years old and appraisal is in today's market, so they are always different, up or down depending on today's market.
I think we all realize that because we're all taxpayers in the town and how our assessed values fluctuate from the market.
Yes.
Thank you for answering the question.
You're welcome.
And just to clarify, the purchase price, I believe, is five hundred and fifty thousand and the extra fifty is just to cover any other costs that might come with the closing.
In addition to the four hundred, in the next year.
We'll get to that, give it a chance. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Deborah Dawn Hugh.
Can you speak up some louder?
No, this isn't working. My name is Deborah Dawn Hugh, I live at seventy-five Brentfield Road. Could you explain how this house is gonna fit into the master plan? Is this gonna be, we buy it, we rehab it, we keep it forever? What do we do with the older buildings? Do you intend to use any of the spaces? I know there's been disagreement amongst everybody, but is there a master plan going forward? Or is this not, is this a temporary measure or a permanent fix?
Yeah, it is intended to be a permanent fix. The intention is, we've been looking at the annex and I think everybody can agree for the last twenty-five years or something they've been talking about, that was originally supposed to be a temporary fix because the town hall was having issues. The idea is that we wanna move people out of the annex into this building and as we effect repairs or whatever's necessary in the town hall to open some meeting offices in there, the big hall and so forth, so the intention is that we're going to put people in there what we consider at this point to be a permanent basis and we, there's no definitive answer yet on the, excuse me, the annex, but I think everybody has pretty much agreed that we have to do something that is no longer a good option to run the town business out of that building.
Will this building, as in modification, be enough to handle sort of annex now?
The immediate uses of the first floor only, because being a historical building, we are doing our very best to protect the integrity of the building itself. So we won't move to the second floor on that unless it's absolutely necessary because that would require a lot of modifications to it. We don't have as many modifications on the first floor because effectively, we have to be able to open all the hallways and, you know, things like that, but we have to manage it. If you go to the second floor, we don't have all kinds of stuff. The only thing that matters is that we can move the bathroom down to a room in the annex.
Yeah, still to use, I have a question about that one.
Well, I would say, there are some towns that have said that they don't mind anyone in the annex unfortunately, so they do not want to, yeah. But some people lose it, they're perfectly happy, work in there, they're not making a hurry, they move it up. So, for those who are interested, if you'd like to.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Commander, please turn the ground, add your name and address.
Wait, can you wait for the word class?
Okay, someone's alarmed.
That's it, one twenty-six Washington Road. As written, it states that further to authorize this report to sell, convey, or dispose of anything, but also, does that, as written, mean that if you were to access this property, be voting on it, that the board gets to decide what we do with that property after your meeting? You can split the parcels up, you can lease it out or sell it without a town vote?
I don't believe we'd be able to sell it without a town vote, but there has been no discussion and that's the first I've ever heard of somebody suggesting that we might split it up, so I would say right now that's another all of that.
I hear that, but does it give the board the power to do so without the town's consent? Because right now, were to get rid of a property, the other properties, we would discuss it or it would be discussed in the town way in, same purchases, but this states as written that we as a town would not have access to any stay in that.
What? We're consulting with the attorney, please, give us a second.
Okay, so the answer to that question according to the attorney is the board of select, well, the select board rather, would have the ability to do that, yes?
Any other questions?
Hi, Kevin Wood, H.O. Road. My question is, this property's been on the market for two and a half months and there's no offers on it except for town's interest, it's still in the market. In a market that's very competitive for selling houses quickly, and this I think is a real deal too. And things are, I'm a real deal too, I'm this, and they sell it quick and still in this market. This has been on the market for two and a half months, I question that. Could you repeat the question, because we just. My question comes to the value, I'm also a real estate broker. So, this property's been on the market for two and a half months with no offers yet in this market, which things fly off the market within a week or two. So, that's my question, is the value, is the value really there at five fifty? I don't see it.
Yes, sir.
Don Damon, fourteen North Main Street. I have a question that goes to the second article, but also with part of this article, so we're looking at an overall investment, theoretically at least a million dollars, right? How did you generate the four hundred thousand dollars worth of renovation?
I'm going to ask you to please hold that question and wait until, if the Article One does not pass, Article Two is gone.
People need to know what they're spending their money on.
When we get to that article, we will address that, please. So sit down and wait, thank you. Answer the question, answer the question. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Paul McCarthy, three eleven Brentfield Road. Can we vote to table one while we discuss Item Two? And if so, I propose that we table Item One and come back to it.
Second. You can do that. Okay, everyone who wants to table Article One and readdress this afterward, I need you to vote. Remember your clickers. Okay, go ahead and vote. Okay, fifty-four percent want to table Article One and move to Article Two. Open discussion on the floor. What? Go ahead, Joe, make your, read your.
Article Two. I move that the amount of fifty thousand dollars is hereby transferred from Capital Stabilization Fund, I'm sorry, Capital Purchase Stabilization Fund for the purpose stated in the article.
I need to readdress this. In order to table, it was a two-thirds majority and we did not have that. Two-thirds is a hundred and thirty-four. So, we're back Article One. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion to vote?
Does any, I just wanna convey that the Finance Committee, when we looked at this, we just wanted people to, one thing that was very important to watch is it includes an acre of land that's adjacent to the town hall in Colonial Park. So it really addresses, you know, I said we look at need, it really addresses a problem we have with parking, a lack of parking, and then also if you look at the engineering study for the annex, the building has been in bad shape for a long time, it's really dangerous, I think, for people to be there and you can read the study inside yourself. So this is the need that this, that this building would address. And then also the last thing is for us, real estate has inherent value, so if for some reason people change their mind down the road or something, it could be sold or split up, but even though right now the plan is to make it a permanent office space, but that's just, I just wanna let people know, it's our Finance Committee, we're just.
Do you want to speak? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, and actually one last thing, I think the, I think the purchase has been sort of on hold for the town. I think the people that were interested in buying understand that the town was looking at this, so I think that was part of the reason it may not have sold at this point.
Mr. Kelly?
Okay. When we found out that this property had gone on the market, it was immediately following the town voting down the last option, which was the twelve and a half million dollar option. And ironically, on the same day that we were voting whether or not we wanted to do a dead exclusion, which also failed at that point. We listened to a lot of people over the last year and a half, two years maybe, about the things that were important to them with getting a new building or supplemental building, I won't call it new, but supplemental building. One of the most important things people felt was that it was something that needed to be in the center of town. They didn't want the town offices to be on the outskirts, they wanted it to be in the center. This is in the center. They also, the house is also located directly across the street from the new public water system that is in the process of being finished now. As was mentioned earlier, it has a, it has a new septic system that went in, I believe it was in July, if I'm not mistaken. One of the things that has been discussed many times over the last twenty-five years at least is the need for supplemental parking for the Colonial Park. There's enough land here, and although we haven't made any decisions on it, but I think everybody is kind of thinking the same thing, and that is if we get this property, we would like to allow the Colonial Park residents, the overfloor parking onto this property would be directly across the street from the driveway going into the Colonial Park. So there are a lot of things here that make a lot of sense for the town. Ultimately, it's not the select board that finds and that wants to do this. Our job as a select board is to identify the needs of the town and find the best possible solution and the most fiscally responsible solution to doing this. Rethinking if we can get this house for this price, getting that and fixing it up to where we can utilize the first floor would be roughly a million dollars, which is significantly less than numbers that we've heard to this point. It would also, later in this, on this meeting, we'll be talking about money for maybe replacing windows and whatnot at the town hall, so that was something else that we thought about. So, it also ties together all of the town property, the library, the annex, the town hall, the housing, and this building is kind of a natural fit. And that made a lot of sense. There's been a lot of talk about the need for a senior center and if the town at some point decides they wanna put a new senior center in, we have space enough to do that right on this property and as we are not, and I'm not the expert on this, I'm parroting what the legislature should tell me, so if I'm wrong, they'll yell at me. But we are not held to the same zoning regulations because we are in the mentality that, you know, other states buying commercial property or residential property might be held to. So we think there's an awful lot of potential, not only for today, but for going forward with other needs. And that would say this would have to go out and find a piece of land later that we could do a senior center on. So I'm not saying that's even on the table at this point, but there's been a lot of talk about it. It could be the foreseeable future, so I would ask that everybody keep that in mind when you're making a decision on a property. It's not simply. It's not simply going in and getting a few offices in that building. There's a lot of other opportunities in this property. Personally, I think even if you got it just for the location, it's worth the money you're paying for the property itself. So, again, please just keep that in mind when you're making your decision. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Joel Mar, 37 East Hill Road. It was said that that wasn't a plan B, but it seems kind of funny that how it lines up with just after the last time that we had this plan voted out. That being said, you're looking at a million dollars to put into this building, and then down the road, like Mr. Kelly just said, that possibly build on the property a senior center, which is going to cost, you know, a lot more money. With all of that, is there any plan with the annex to be taken care of? That's going to cost even more money. If you took a million dollars from this building that we're looking at buying today and put it into the annex, would that make the annex fine? And we'd be able to use that? Or, it just seems like we're just always spreading stuff around to ask for more money, ask for more money, ask for more money.
Bill Cantel, 1230 Dunham Bridge Hill Road. I think the annex is getting a bad rap here. That building was purchased by the town in 2001, $350,000 from Dr.'s office. Over the two and a half decades town's owned, it's done a lot of upgrades in that structure. You go down to the basement, it looks like a forest down there with all the supports that they put in to support the first floor due to the condition, uh, the concerns of the weight load. I have a statement here, I want to re, must touch on some of it, but this statement is as a citizen, so if I had a hat on, I'd be switching it, but just want to say after 35 years I've been in this town, the issue of this has been brought up at a lot of cost and a lot of time lost. So, what is it the town needs? We need usable office space. We don't need a meeting area. We have a meeting area in the old town hall. That building just needs some upgrades in order to come back online. We actually have two meeting areas, we have this room, we have the town hall, and with correct IT, we could have meetings together joined through, I don't know, IT through whatever, and that would more than take care of any issues the town has with town meetings and going over the occupancy roads. The senior center, we don't really need a senior center at this time. I believe that the use of the church property is sufficient, everybody seems to be happy there. Also, the town, I believe, has made some investments in that property to bring the kitchen up to better code. I don't know that for a fact, that's just a rumor that I heard, I had tried to get confirmation of that, but I hadn't been able to. So, with buying this property and if the town decides they want to put a senior center in, there's a piece of property right there, right next to the senior housing, it couldn't be more convenient for people that would use it the most to go to it. So, what we need is usable office space. And the number of $6,000 square feet was put out by a study, I'm not sure where that number came from, but I think it was just by asking the different offices what they needed for space. The existing annex has approximately, let me see here, 3,200 square feet with both floors. Adding the Hitchcock building immediately would give us another 1,700, approximately 1,700 square feet by just utilizing the first floor. The second floor, which what we've been calling stage two, that's when we would have, we would have to do much more upgrades to the property, we'd have to probably put an elevator in for AAV compliance. But the first floor could be used with just a ramp and some upgrades to the egress, the hallway and the office doors. We would gain four, three to four offices immediately. The bathroom, we only need one at a time because of the low occupancy load, which would be under 20. If under 20, we only need one bathroom, it just needs to be a unisex and AAV compliant bathroom, which the structure gives us the ability to do. It also gives us the ability to have the turnarounds for chairs if that's needed in both areas of the egress, which would be the side door where the ramp is looking like is going to fit in really nice. We'd have to reconfigure the parking areas, the AAV required parking would be right next to the building, I'd have coming up the side door right in, it's a perfect situation. And then the other door would be, there'd be room down at the front door for the turnaround that's required for AAV compliance, and then we fix the door so it would be correct in for egress.
Point of order, two minutes. Do you not feel this information is not accorded? I know, but I'm allowing him to go on because I think it's important to hear. This is our building, Inspector, who knows and understands all this.
He said he's speaking as a citizen.
I know, but his credentials.
But the information I have is still valid. If you don't want to hear it, I'll sit down.
No, we want to hear it.
Yes, sir.
While some may feel the structure is old, I suggest you just go to the town, green, do a 360, look at every building that you see, with the exception of Cumbes, is about of the same age, and those structures are, are most far in excellent condition due to their being maintained over the centuries. And this building is one of the premier ones in the town as far as its condition is in excellent condition for its age. Of course, it's going to need work, but that's understandable. So, does it have concerns? Absolutely. All buildings have concerns, either new and old. But it's not something that can't be addressed. And what would the expenses be? Well, some may be expensive, some may not. We don't really know, we haven't had the time to really evaluate the building that closely outside of a report we got today, and it just came in, I mean, the ink is still wet on it, and it doesn't have anything in there that can't be addressed relatively easy. You got to remember that we're investing in a piece of property that will hold its value. We're not throwing money away at something. It's a property that if the town decides it don't want to use it, it can be reconverted back to residential and sold on the open market. And for 550, when we bought the other one for 350 25 years ago, I don't think that's out of range, you know, out of range for its value. I really believe that the value is there, especially when you take into consideration of the property. The property is, if anyone goes into the back of that property to where there was the barns, there's a cellar hole there, it's like a park back there. It's a beautiful piece of property, and the town would be stupid to let it just slide away to some other development.
Did you wrap it up?
Yeah. All I want to say is that with the correct processes and, you know, we purchased it and we go through the processes, we probably could have that thing up and running by late spring, early summer. We don't have to sit and wait for another three or four years for some unknown project to be completed for us to do the stuff we really don't need, so, that's it.
Matt Timberwood, 126 Washington Road. I'd like to propose a change to the article in where the board does not have the authorization to self convey, lease or otherwise dispose of a portion of said property, seeing as I asked a question if the town had any intentions of using the property for anything else, or is that what you said, it could not be due of? But then we kind of got into it, it seemed like we could always sell it, but just you said, and that, sorry, that we would be leasing and parking, which is not necessarily the need, but I think the town should have a right in what we do with that property for the board, just as we have with all of the properties that we own as a town. So, I was like, I don't know how to do that, I'll just like to work, but I would like that removed and where the board does not have the sole right to do what they see fit with the property. Does know what to do.
I don't know that there's much to address on it really. You know, like I said, we don't have any intention of doing that, but, you know, the select board changes every year, so anything is possible. You know, I mean, if you feel comfortable doing that, then...
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to remove further to authorize the select board to self convey, lease or otherwise dispose of the fee, title or lesser interests in all or a portion of said property for such consideration.
Matt, you have to write it all out, your amendments.
All right, just to add a little bit to what Mr. Kelly reported to you, it is true, it's difficult to get completely accurate numbers at this point because we're asking people to come in and give us an estimate of what it would cost to do different things. And, you know, many people aren't prepared to do that because we don't own the property and we may never own the property, and they don't necessarily see this as a good use of their time because a lot of these folks are not coming from Brinkfield, we've had people out here from the Boston area. But just so you know, in the short time that this has been on the table with us, we've had the folks come in and take a look at the heating system, we've had the foundation looked at, we've had the driveway and ramp looked at, we've had the lead and asbestos situation looked at, and that was last week. We did have another, yeah, structural engineer in there, and that was today, and they said we can have those number 40 by seven, I said, boy, fuck all the waiting till the very last second. So, we do have a lot of these numbers, but, you know, in fairness, when we, when we put the number 400,000 on it, it was based on what we had, an image of what it was going to cost us. It could be higher, it could be lower. We don't know until we get the real numbers in. We, today we had somebody from, what was it, today? Salem? That was today, yeah. So, they were down from Salem last today. So, we have looked at a lot of this, and we're not just going into this thing and saying, gee, we think we can do it for this much money. We've talked to a lot of the professionals on this, and I think Bill Cantel and Pat Leamy, who was a retired state inspector, because they took time and went through that, not because they were going to give us the accurate, you know, this is what it's going to cost you, or this is what you need to do, but they are an expertise in that. And at least it gave us an opportunity to get a picture of what we might have to do and an idea in terms of the number it might cost us to get there. So, we have done a lot of this already, we've got, most of the folks that we would need to have been in and looked at the property, and we can, we will, if the town wants to purchase the property, which I hope they do, we will continue with that process. So, we are looking at that. And one of the most important things to remember too is that if you decide not to purchase this, which is fine, that's the, you know, right of the town to make that decision, but you need to understand that that option will be off the table forever. So, things like if we decide we have to put a senior center in or, you know, another option for a little whatever, there's no saying where that might actually happen. So, just prove the law. Thank you.
Jeffrey B., 152 Wales Road. I thought we had a motion and a second to vote. If we don't...
Motion to rewrite, sorry.
No, even prior to that, like 15 minutes ago, I thought you made a motion to vote.
Make tables.
Make the motion to vote on the...
We have to, we have to recognize this other gentleman's motion, considering he brings it up and writing, and we'll vote on that, and once we accept it or not, then we'll vote.
Cindy Scavera, downtown Tamar Road. Personally, for me, I think just for the preservation of our downtown and our historic town, whether we do nothing with this building, to have some other type of unknown business come in or whatever, I want to stay a small town, that's why I live here, I hope that's why you've come here, you go to our neighboring town, look what their downtown looks like. That's not where I choose to live, and I hope you feel the same.
Mike Babo, downtown Tamar Road. I just want to point out, about 12 years ago, a plan came before the town that would cover all five buildings for around 14 million. Town voted it down, they were concerned with what it would do to taxes. Couple of months ago, we had a plan just through the town hall that would be about 12 million, 13 million. So, we went from five buildings at 14, to one building at 12 or 13 million, it got voted down because people were concerned about what it would do to their taxes. We have an opportunity here to get space that won't affect people's taxes, and we're hearing, but what about the annex? What about the senior center? What about something else? Well, when we brought all those things together, people voted it down. Now, we can always find a reason that something isn't perfect, but kicking the annex forward year after year after year, we saw what happened with the budget for just the town hall. Prices are going to keep going up, and eventually, when the annex caves in, you're going to have to do something in addition to probably paying insurance, anybody that injured in the process. But it's going to keep getting more and more expensive. You have an opportunity to acquire something that won't affect your taxes, and I don't see how that's a concern to people. That's only my opinion.
Karen Dustin, H.O. Road. I just feel that whether you are for this or against this, we owe a debt of gratitude to what our people have done to present this to us. And it's been a lot of work, and I think we really, no matter where you are on the side of it, we should really be thankful to you.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing to add about Joe Benicia, 209 Soro. One thing that hasn't been mentioned about the building itself is file storage. From what I've heard, we could have potential storage in the garage. Now, I know all of the files are everywhere, covered in mouse glue, in mold, whatever, it is an issue. This could potentially address that as well, save storage for all of our files, history, everything. That's a huge asset just in itself, when you look at the cost of having soft storage or clean storage or files, so, I'll just...
Come up properly so we can see you. Yes, Matt?
Yes, sir. He's a Pittsburgh senior, 7th Street. I have a couple of questions on the building itself. One of the problems with the annex is the load in a house rather than in a commercial building. Is that going to be an issue over here, do we know? Because I know some of the offices are moving.
I'm going to have you ask that question to...
Direct it to the...
My question is the load capacity in a house compared to a commercial building. To do that again, is it going to happen like the annex is happening, and things are going to happen in there?
It's a business zone, it would be used, business use, okay? Business use requires 150 square feet per person. The annex...
What about load capacity? The wild pile capacity? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I believe, I'm worried about 100 pounds per square foot. The annex has been supported over the years, as I said, with the basement, two down there with a forest.
Yeah, I know.
The second floor has some issues that probably shouldn't be, no more paperwork should be brought up to the second floor there. The new, the Hitchcock building, the first floor also has the ability to be supported relatively easily, it's in actually the report we got that it should be supported. It can be done relatively easily and cheaply with a lot of quality and so on and so forth. That, the second floor, that would require a lot more engineering, but that's not something that we need. With the first floor brought on, that's another additional 17,000, 1,700 square feet, and then down the road, years to come, possibly, then you get to the second floor.
Okay, well, that's another question I had because I've seen on Facebook, and I looked up the rules as far as the 30% spending rule, once you vote for spending 30% of value, you need to bring the whole thing up to code.
So, you only have to bring a certain, the items that you're addressing, the items that you're modifying, you don't have to bring the whole building into compliance. I'm not sure if you're...
Being a municipal building, though, this, these are my concerns personally. Being a municipal building, don't you have to have access to the second floor for workers?
No.
No.
No, you don't.
Okay, so you don't have to say you're the assessor and the assessor talks about the second floor.
You just mentioned, read this on Facebook.
No, I also read the law, excuse me. I also read the law after I stopped talking about it.
Facebook site is not unauthorized for...
And that's why I went to the mass judge of law.
Any information on there?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to get you, but I want you to understand that I can take Facebook at this level.
Are you finished with your question?
Please, sir.
If you're finished, I would like you to sit down.
Do you understand what it says?
I understand. Please sit down.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Can I just add a little bit more?
No, I think we're good.
I would like to follow it up a little bit because there are exceptions on the Mass General Law and I read it, but do we have those exceptions in writing so that we don't get screwed? I mean, and that's what she's trying to ask me. I know it's a 30%, I know that don't happen to certain, that's what the law says, but and there are exceptions.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
So, we only need to make the areas that are open to public comply, that would be the first floor. The second floor would be used mostly for storage and employees not required to live in low occupancy and to upgrade the second floor until we open that to the public.
And storage doesn't mean employees, it's open to the employee.
For employees that have issues, we have to make accommodations for them and we will at that time.
And then we're going to use it as your storage is filed, is paper?
Whatever.
The load?
Yeah, Christmas.
And then what happens with the load?
And as far as storage goes, this property has a three, probably larger garage that we're, we're obviously not going to use as a garage. It could be converted to conditioned storage space for every town office can have. It's huge enough for every town office to have their own filing, their long-term files there. We don't have to pay for outside file services that sometimes have to have. We don't have to keep the files in the old town hall where they're going to get destroyed by mold and all of that and so on. It's a, it's a perfect situation for cloud storage on the basement, garage level.
Okay, I thought I saw one other. Yes, sir. Anthony Soro, Indiana Cubert Drive. I own a multiple property through town. I think this is one of the best and I've been to many of your doors and we've been talking about this for many years. This option, I think, is one of the best options that we have. I am one that, I don't like to kind of die and I'll tell you that, I think this is the best option we have. Regardless of someone says a property is valued, they're saying the value is 400, I buy many, many properties that are, that are, I paid much more for the property because I know the value of it. I believe these individuals have really been looking at this and again, this is the best option. Again, I've been to many of your doors and we, we don't want to lose the downtown feeling. That's another reason why I live here. We don't want to lose that feeling so. And I believe there's, there's a lot of opportunity for future growth in that property. So, let's just move forward, I think we should move forward and be vice versa. All the other options, millions and millions.
Okay, now, we have to vote on the amended article. I will, do you want me to read it to you so everybody's clear? It will be a majority vote. Now, before we do that, check your clicker, mine is shut off, just push the button up on top, make sure it's on so when you vote, you account. Okay? Who will vote, who will make it? We'll vote on the motion to amend the article first, okay? Then we'll vote on the amended article, it's very involved. So, is everybody ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, now. To amend the article. We don't vote to amend it. You have to vote to amend it first, then we vote on the article that's amended.
Why you read the amendment?
It's very simple. He struck out to further authorize a select board to self convey lease or otherwise dispose of the free titles for lesser interest in all portions of said property for such consideration and on such terms and conditions as a select board deems to be in the best interest of towns. That's being removed from the article. So, if you want to do that, you have to vote to make the amendment and then we'll vote on the amended article. It goes in Decker Leves. So, it's, I'm leaving this open, has everybody voted who wants to?
No.
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 Seven come in, so we're almost there.
We have two of us standing.
Point of order. Yes, doesn't it state in the town's bylaws that within an hour of a vote, you can request that a second vote be taken?
No.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, and I request that another vote be taken.
Thank you.
But to clarify, not everyone understood what we have.
All right. We have had a request to have the vote reconsidered into second. So we are going to have another vote. All right?
To be clear, this vote is to purchase the property.
Correct. Point of order, Mr. Honorable Attorney. The request to re-vote this has to be from someone who was on the prevailing side of the question. Is that correct? You were on the prevailing side? Okay. There you go. Now, does everybody understand what we're doing and what this vote is for? All right. What we're gonna do is have a vote on the motion to reconsider. This is not for the purchase, all right? To make sure that everybody's on board and they're all moving forward with this. Okay? Do you understand?
For this question that the prevailing side with the no vote because of the way it works.
Correct. Yeah, but you can't do it with, you have to believe in their honesty. Can I have a quiet, please?
Is this vote a simple majority or a two-thirds majority vote required?
Two-thirds. For reconsideration. Today, we're not voting on the purchase yet. We are going to vote to reconsider another vote. All right? Just so I'm clear, what is considered the prevailing side? I voted yes on this. Yeah. Anybody have any questions?
I think the point is, yes, you had a vote on the purchase of the property.
Could we have your attention, please?
This is because it has been a request for reconsideration. So before you can even think about voting again whether or not to buy the property, we have to see if the room is interested in reconsidering it. If the vote for reconsideration is no, the path is settled.
The vote for reconsideration cannot come from the prevailing side. Can we just do this?
He just admitted that it's against. That it's possible prevailing side.
Can we have a lawyer speak on this, please?
How many times have I told you until you get to where you want it?
Yes.
Be respectful.
I'm trying to be respectful.
No, no he's not.
Yes, I am, ma'am, but the problem is, is that you have a prevailing side. It's in the bylaw. Prevailing means against. He voted for it, therefore he's not prevailing side.
That's why I wanted to clarify, to make sure I was clear with everyone. He is not with the prevailing side.
Therefore, the vote stands.
Loss, no, because he's made the motion to reconsider. By town bylaw, we can do that. He's made it, it was seconded, so we're gonna put it on the floor for a vote.
But he wasn't on the prevailing side.
He's on the prevailing side to put it through. And then on the prevailing side, you cannot report the vote.
Okay, according to the attorney general bylaw, it doesn't state anything about prevailing vote. So he can make the motion, we can have the vote. I'm done discussing this, we're gonna take the vote now.
This is a vote to say you want to re-vote the purchase option. This is to simply say yes, vote it again, or no. If the four votes not to re-vote it, then the issue is done. So if they vote to do it again, then we can go back and revisit. Re-vote rather, on the actual person.
You have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Honorable Attorney, I just wanted to clarify, the vote to reconsider is a majority. If the answer is we reconsider, we do a second vote, which is two-thirds.
Correct.
Correct.
No, reconsider is two-thirds by town bylaw. Okay? Make sure your flickers are off, okay? Light on in the corner. Open the vote now. Voting is closed. The vote to reconsider fails. Done Article 1, that kills Article 2. Okay, can I have your attention? We need to make a vote on Article 2 of no action, because of course you can't do anything. At this point, Article 2, we need to make a vote of no action. Okay? So we're gonna have a vote on that, it's just parliamentary, we have to do it. So as Mike just pointed out to me, make sure you push the 1 or 2, and you can see it in your screen, to make sure your vote is valid. Okay? All righty. I'm not gonna do anything.
The motion is for no action, so it should be 1.
Number 1 is yes, we have no action. Number 2 is no. Okay, we need a two-thirds vote, so everybody please vote, so we can put it to bed. All right, voting starts now. The motion passes. Okay, quiet, please, so we can hear. She wants to move Article 7 forward and address it now, and then do the other articles in order after that. All in favor? All right, let's take a vote. Okay, it has to be a majority vote to move it. Okay? Everybody ready? Voting starts now. The article, the motion fails. We will take them in order.
Yeah, if you have discussions and conversation, please go inside. Move that the amount of, excuse me, move that the amount of $250,000 is hereby transferred from the fiscal year 2026 certified free cash for the purpose stated in the article.
Any questions or discussion?
Any other question, are these for windows that's still open, or is it gonna be fixed windows? We haven't decided yet.
Who has a question?
He wants to know if the windows are fixed or if they will open and close.
That hasn't been decided yet.
Any other questions?
Are they for new windows, or are they more replacement, using the old windows?
Again, we haven't taken any kind of vote on that, only that we got a number of what would cost to replace the windows, good replacement windows. But the decision as to how we're gonna do a part at this point, the board has not voted on it yet.
Is that including a basement on the plaza?
Does that what?
Including a basement on the plaza?
Uh, I don't know. The procurement officer was looking at that.
If you could give him a second to look it up.
So we don't have a vote on that, whether we're gonna do a re-placing, or is that something that we're gonna do?
Sorry, Jeffrey, you went too well there. Not sure what you're doing, and how did you come up with that figure?
Because we've got a number, we've got a number to have a sense of where we would have to be if we wanted to do the windows, okay? So we asked the procurement officer to reach out and just get us numbers on what we might need to do to replace these windows. Could be less than that, I don't know at this point. But, you know, I mean, if you decide that that's not a good decision to, for that $250,000, again, that's entirely up to the town. If you don't want to do it, then you don't have to do it, but just understand that'll be another building that's not on the table, and we will essentially be right where we are today. So just look.
Kate Ventolson, 709 East Hill Road. I understood that these windows, if they were put into the town hall, would then allow us to use the town hall again. I thought that was kind of important, that people should know that.
Chris Morzinko, 152 Wells Road. How can you give us a figure, if you don't have quotes, we're voting on an arbitrary number?
Okay.
You don't have any, you had assessments done to the property at 19 Main Street. But you didn't have any contractors come in, you knew any potential idea?
Yes, we did.
You did?
Yep, and this gentleman's gonna speak to that, so he is the procurement.
We have four quotes, we have four quotes for a variety of different options.
Yeah, here you go.
We have four quotes for a variety of different options, the high end one being for $250,000 for the restoration of the existing windows. It does not specifically say a basement.
I appreciate that, the way it reads, it was a source. Could we confirm what this lady asked? What is this replacement of windows due to this building? We will be able to occupy it, and how will that impact the planning for office space and building usage in that?
Okay, well, our building commissioner is not here, so I'll tell you what, the conversation was that I had with him. The building was closed, not because it was condemned, regardless of what's been being said about that, but because there was a problem with the window actually falling out of the building. And it was closed so that nobody would be injured or worse hit by flying glass. If the windows are replaced in that building, I told it, we will be able to open that, and reuse the big room, and there's not an awful lot of usable office space at this point, but at least the main hall would be open to us again, which meant that other committees and boards that don't actually have offices, but they hold meetings, you know, like the, there's only Board of Appeals or Conservation or something, they couldn't, when they're holding their meetings in the big hall, which they can't do now. I think some of them have been, I think, it's got the cat and, I'm not sure what the rest are doing.
Thank you.
Yes?
Susan Staples, Hope Bell Field Road. And just to clarify, I don't have a question, I was just making sure, the poor woman, who was very patient, bringing her turn, could we please also just ask, I know you're in the podium in the flight, but make sure people going to the mic over here are also, you take a peek, make sure there isn't someone waiting.
We will do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Move the question.
Do I have a second? Okay, we moved the question, we are now gonna hold the vote. It's a simple majority. Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I'll withdraw.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. Kevin, real quick.
Kevin, we're paying your road. Mark, you are correct, Bill did say, once these windows are replaced, the town hall is back in use. That is our answer.
Thank you.
Okay, is everybody ready to vote?
Hold on one second. Zach New, Prospect Hill, I can email you, it says there's other things that need to be done to that building before it can be built. Along with getting a structural engineer to look at the fire escape, has that been done? No. And it's also, what about the elevator? When we had the inspection last year, it failed, a park was supposed to be ordered, that was put on hold. So we can't just say that if we pass, if the windows pass, that we're gonna go back into that building, there's still listed stuff from the building inspector that needs to be done.
I've just been told by the folks at Dual Pricing Co., that to get the elevator back in service is $1,000.
Okay. One more question.
On another note, we do have to get AAB compliant, we'll see that 30%. Those, that $250,000 will exceed that. You have a 30% vote. If you exceed the 30% or anything before it comes to building, you have to make the AAB compliant, or all the things that.
Is the 30% a value, or 30% of the structure?
Building's valuable.
It has no.
$180,000.
What's the value of that building?
$5,000.
Well, we don't have the building commissioner who looks like he's left, so. But I, what I think is important is one of the first processes that needs to be done to get us on the right track, using that building. You know, the alternative is gonna be that we just can't use the building, because we've already voted down, we have to that building expanding it, it can be used, reusable and better office space, so we've already voted that one down. So this attempt was to get windows into it, so we could at least start using the main hall and that again, and the town doesn't want to do that, and again, it's entirely up to the folks in the streets.
I just want to go back, serving here, to your question about the windows. Looking through the material I have, on September 14th, 2025, Christopher Alco, the procurement officer, worked with D. Hayward Restoration. They specialize in window restoration in the around of Sheldon Falls. And we have a report from them on the windows of the town hall. And toward the end, price range for full restoration of all windows is $175,000 to $250,000. So it listed here, I'd love to just come down and let you see that. I just wanted to let you know that we're doing this, we're trying. All right, thank you.
Christopher, on 14th Central Road. I was one of the individuals that worked with engineers and consultants on the assessments of the town hall to assess its current condition. What I can tell you all is that all of our consultants and engineers had various scopes that were important deferred maintenance that we otherwise should have been doing as a community over the course of the last 20 or 30 years. Windows was one of the number one scopes. Why? Because it keeps the water out. We have a water infiltration problem in that building, and if we don't make it tight, it will continue to deteriorate to the point where we will not be able to use it as a community. So gentleman is correct, the windows have to be done. There are other scopes that over time should be part of the capital recovery planning. Some of them are on the warrants tonight, one is painting the envelope. There's another scope that eventually we will have to do as a committee, and that's fixing the foundation from a moisture perspective, and then obviously a roof after that. But these are things that we should have been doing for the last 30 years, and we haven't done it. At this point, we do have the money that has been specifically set aside by FinCon to address these town hall related issues. What we're voting on is to just simply give our leadership access to these funds, so we can do what we're obligated to do, which is to maintain these buildings, just like you would maintain your properties. So maybe we don't get to enter in for a certificate of occupancy right away from the windows, it doesn't matter. We don't repair the windows, they will continue to move, and we will lose the value of this asset in its entirety. And that's the reality. There are engineering reports all over the internet on this building that date back to 2012. Why? Because we posted them on there. You can go there and read these engineering reports. The windows were a critical item that was supposed to be done within six months back in 2016. It hasn't happened. We have to go forward with these repairs. There are no other options. We voted down the Hitchcock House, we voted down doing a large town hall project because of the tax issues. You can see from the numbers that we gave on all these alternative proposals, that all of them will raise taxes except for what? Fixing and maintaining the town hall, getting a certificate of occupancy, go back in by the building commissioner, and then maybe doing some partition walls, movable demountable walls for office space. There's over 8,500 square feet in this building. We may have to do other things down the road, but at this point, we have to at least minimum address these major scope items. And it is what it is. You do it to your home, we have to do these things to this building as well.
My name is Richard Seawick, I live on Hollow Road in a house that my wife and I built 53 years ago. We decided that we wanted to stay in this town, because it was a community, people helped each other. We can argue as we choose, town meeting is a time when you could call your neighbor names, and they can't sue you. But for all of that, we are a community. I've argued with many of you over many years, some I won, some I lost, but the same people I argued with would come to my house with a chainsaw the next day to help me clear a tree, or I'd ask them if I could watch their house while they were vacationing. The town hall is our community home. It is where our community exists. It must be maintained, and it must be done now, we can afford to do it. And more than that, as welcoming as this building is, it's not the old town hall, and that's not George Washington, I'm a root. Please support this.
All right, we've had a motion and a second, and we are ready to vote on this article now. Make sure your icons are on. Okay? We're ready to vote, we're gonna vote now. All right, we're done. Thank you, it passed.
Move that the amount of $180,000 is hereby transferred from the fiscal year 2026 certified free cash for the purpose stated in the article.
If I can learn where you would be working.
If it's, if it's white, you've got my vote.
Something else I'd like to...
Can you come up, Rob, so I can see you down?
Sure. Something else I'd like to mention about paint and all these repairs to the town hall. Remember, we can't forget, it's in the historical district. We still do have access potentially to historical funds.
I don't care.
And grants. And some of that, some of that money can actually defray some of our costs as well. So it's not like we're going to just simply procure this money and still not try to work hard to get these grants. There's emergency grants throughout, uh, from, uh, from the state. We do have to spend the money first, and then we, we apply for it and then we get reimbursed. We can do that with this town halls, as for the paint color. I won't, I don't want to speak for the historical commission, but when we were doing our research with the consultants, we did have a historical consultant with us that gave us advice on all these parts and pieces. What it was described as is that the original color was in earth and color. And that is the historical color. Now, paint doesn't obviously look earthy. So, you know, for, for a, for a, you know, historical, uh, part, what we would do, of course, we would ask the sweatboard to do along the building, we, we would work on the historical commission to bring it back to that historical color because it is important. Earth is kind of like a, looked up on the internet, we looked it up all over the place when we were looking at stick styled architecture, earth and color. At one point in time, the town hall was painted white. And you may have your own preference on that, and there are pictures available through the historical commission. They would give you those and show you what it looked like when it was painted white. So the point is, is the paint's got to be done, you have to pay for it. We can talk about colors and all those stakeholders and make sure that, you know, hopefully it's something that's better than sand, that's my perception.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote now, folks? Once more, make sure your pictures are on, and voting will start now. Voting end. 86.228, yes.
I move that the amount of $59,465 is hereby transferred from fiscal year 2026 certified free cash for the purpose stated in the article.
Any questions? No questions? Can I call a vote? Voting starts now. Okay, voting start. 78, yes, 78%.
Move that the amount of $3,700... Oh, excuse me. I'm going to ask, apparently we need 10 people to, um, agree to split this, this article. Right now, there's a, is an elected official on the article, which causes the article to require a two-thirds vote. So we actually want to... What's the best way to do that?
Essentially, if you're an elected official, in order to approve or increase your salary, you need a two-thirds vote. If you're just a hired employee, it's a majority. So in order to make it fair for the group that are just hired people and they won't get cheated out of their money, literally, then we need to break it into two separate sections and vote on it separately. Okay? The one is Deb is the elected official, so she needs a two-thirds vote. The balance of the people listed on the sheet only need a majority. So essentially, we need 10 people to raise their hand and say, yes, we agree to split this, and then we'll move on. We have a... Thank you.
Somebody just checked my work, basically, we subtract the 191.24 would be voting on 3,591.57 cents. Just, um, you know, I, I just want to mention, uh, let me just make the motion first. I move that the amount of $3,591.57 is hereby transferred from fiscal year 2026 certified free cash for the purpose stated in the article.
Second.
Was that for Deb or the others?
Oh, no, that's, that's everybody, except, everyone except, essentially everyone except for the town clerk.
So it's not everybody but the town clerk?
Everybody, this is a majority vote. Okay, Deb will be after this, so any other questions, anybody, does it all understand? Yes.
Jim Donovan, 16 Will Road. Just my question is, why isn't it just these 10 people that are affected by this? What about other salary employees or other employees in town? Why is it just these people? Because it's not the people that have salaries and it's not the people that have appropriations, but just these 10 people who are affected by whatever this is?
Right here.
Do we ask though, town accountant? Um, good question. All the other employees other than the ones listed, um, are come from, um, they don't have dedicated line items. Basically, they're lump sum allocations, um, which would be the police, highway, fire, and library. So you wouldn't be affected by this 261 days, you would be paid for it. It would be only employees that have a single line item and there's no other funds to draw money from. But if you have a large group, amount of money with several employees or multiple employees, you'd have the funds and, um, you would not be impacted by this variance.
But like, the highway surveyor, like, the fire chief and the police chief all have salary.
They're elected positions.
Not like, fire chief and...
He has sufficient funds in his account. I've checked all the accounts, um, all the single line items, and anybody who was short was listed on this.
Okay, I'm ready to call for a vote.
Quick question.
Joe, do you want to state that motion again, please?
Your question.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Yes. Why do these things appear on a vote now when this meeting was just pulled together by the building? I'm just curious as to how we tell business. I thought this was an annual meeting type of vote.
So what I, I was trying to explain in the introduction is the, the finance, the finance committee would normally handle something like this during the year with our reserve fund. Um, but reserve funds can't be used in lieu of a town meeting. So because there is a town meeting, it has to be brought in front of the voters. So we could have had a finance, if there was no town meeting, we could have had a finance committee meeting and we could have agreed to, um, transfer money for this account.
Any other questions? All right, folks. No, but you want to clarify the article? Joe, real quick.
Okay. Move that the amount of $3,591.57 is hereby transferred from fiscal year 2026 certified free cash for the purpose stated in the article. Move that the amount of $3,591.57 is hereby, um, for appointed employees in town is hereby transferred from fiscal year 2026 certified free cash for the purpose stated in the article.
Any questions, we're good? All right. Majority, simple majority, voting starts now. Make sure you vote. We saw them getting it up, but it's all right, I'll take the hit. Make sure you push your button.
Can he just have some numbers for us as we're going up?
Okay, voting is over. 78% yes, it passed. So this, this will be for elected official only, and it has to be a two-thirds to pass.
I move that the amount of $1,91.24 for the town clerk is hereby transferred from fiscal year 2026 certified free cash for the town clerk's salary account as stated in the article.
Any questions? Yes, sir?
I'm just curious why a salary employee, elected salary employee would get the extra money?
Just what was, just sort of knows what was presented to us is that, you know, normally there's 260 workdays in the year and this year there was 261, so, uh, some employees did not get a full paycheck in the last, last week of the year. So the account ensures us that this will take care of the upcoming year and that she'll, um, calculate it differently in the future. This is kind of a problem, not a problem, but a challenge for the payroll system where, you know, salary rates have to be put in, and so if you have a longer year, um, you just, you just, when you have somebody that has just one, um, account, for their salary, it doesn't come away at the end of the year, so the account says it's going to do it differently in, in future years.
Any other questions? All right, we're going to vote. Once again, two-thirds, it has to be the pass. Voting starts now. All right, voting closes now. If it passes, 74%.
Article seven. Article seven, I move that the provisions of chapter 59, section 5, see the amount that the Massachusetts Journal was providing additional tax exemptions for taxpayers who had granted personal exemptions on their domicile under chapter 59, section 5, be accepted by the town and, and to provide that the additional exemption shall be 50%. Just so that one says 100%, but we are making a motion for 50%. And the assessor is here to ask, answer questions.
Do we have any questions?
Yes, Matt Timberwood, 26 Washington, Georgia. Um, on the paper provided with the breakdown of all of that, it's a $2.5 million difference from what the current reception is to the increase. Is that per person, per household domicile? Or is that a town hack?
That's not per person.
Send it. Okay, you can stand up and announce your name.
So per person on that, not the total, the pound, really, together, we would be expecting her to not see the taxes.
Big up, please.
Great, but it says amount exemption awarded, is that per domicile? Right.
Per person.
Per person, okay. So follow up to that, like, two minutes. Um, how do we anticipate on making up that? Because we live in a field which is predominantly a senior residence, um, a town of less than 4,000. And as we bring a new generation to our divisions, how do we make that up? If we're not expecting, uh, $43,000 per individual household to meet the success? So that's the town hall? Of course, I am concerned that currently at the rate that we're at, are we expecting only $43,000 less in taxes as in town if people need this? Or should we be expecting, let's say, 25% of our town, meaning some of those expectations? You know, we'll cut it in a value, right? So let's say it's $35,000 or less rather than, or 30. We're losing significant amount of taxes. How as a town do we anticipate making that back up? If we move forward with, we move forward with our town...
Yeah, go ahead.
Christopher on 14th, South Cliff Road. Um, I have a question, but I was the first one to make that statement. That I, I, when I first learned about this tax exemption issue was when we were having all kinds of conversations with residents in the building committee about the taxes, all these expenditures that we have to do as a community, maintenance, projects, all these things. And everyone was so concerned about taxes and the tax increase. We were trying to keep it down as low as we can. And when I presented that to seniors in there, I talked to the assessor and we talked about this issue. And the whole point is that Mass Law allows us as a community to give these exemptions to qualified individuals, seniors, disabled veterans, single moms. We do this so that we lower their tax level. Yes, maybe over time, some of us have to pay a little bit more, but what we're doing is we're supporting our community members who want to continue to stay in this community. And we don't have to worry all the time, and every single time we go for a maintenance item or something like this, we're worried about this whole group coming in and saying the tax impact. Yes, we don't like taxes, but we want to give these exemptions to these folks. And I support it 100%. I would go as far as even saying that I would support going up to the maximum amount that the Massachusetts law allows, if our older lay supported it. My question was, was the original recommendation by the assessor to go to that 100%? That's my question.
Was that one's question ever answered?
I'll get you, I'll get you the poll right now.
So if you go to the first page, there's a paragraph, paragraph three, that tells us that this is something through our older life. So we have older lay each year, and puts that, they would take one example of agents, and three captains. We have, currently have a certain process on our older lay tax, we have that. And what we do is we look at people on the U R website, to get our numbers. And that older lay, that older town, that serves people, that's all, with 75 cents. The assessor's met yesterday, and we have, we have moved on the right of the meeting, but the assessor's voted today to offer 50% increases to those who contribute. The law says you can go up to 100, so we're trying to 50% so that we can see that for your average, does that affect the older lay? How is that going to affect future older lay on contributions? That's your question?
Yes, it does. Any other questions? A second.
Exactly what is a hundred percent exemption?
What a hundred percent case?
It would be double the figures that you see. So the original exemption amount for each of the categories, which we have are the veterans, are the ten percent service connected disability to ninety-nine. The veterans are a hundred percent service connected disabled. And the widow, widowers, or children, minor children, and others. So those numbers would double versus just go in half and half. And you can look at number of exemptions in the first column of the ballot. And the exemption award, we have, it says how many we have in our community. It would tell you that the surviving spouse, widow, widowers currently receive one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Their exemption is passed would be increased to two hundred and sixty-three dollars. And the service connected veterans, to less than one hundred, we have sixteen. They presently receive four hundred dollars off their annual tax bill, increased to six hundred dollars. Your service connected disabled veterans at one hundred percent, we have fifteen of them currently. They receive one thousand dollars. They will receive fifteen hundred dollars off their annual tax bill. And finally, our elderly, qualified elderly, they have to meet the income and asset requirements as prescribed by National Law. They receive five hundred dollars, and they will receive seven hundred and fifty dollars off their annual tax bill.
And this is paid by?
And if you look on the front of this sheet, if you walk the sheet, the overlay account balances and how you can track the overlay is listed as.
Or how fast this amount of money doesn't exist?
Excuse me? Yes, your own account, it already doesn't exist. It does exist. The money exists.
Now?
Now, yes, the balance.
This is just a part of the thing, what I'm asking you about, Captain, is the money.
So if the money doesn't exist, if you go forward right now, annual overlay account is five hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Of which our new liability, if we grant a fifty percent increase, would be thirty-two thousand, eight eighty-two for every. That's just one month on all of the management. If after three years, you didn't have any money in the overlay or raising and adding more to the overlay wasn't feasible, you can go to break this back down to where it is today. I think, you know, back to the point when you were talking about building in town hall and some of these citizens who want, again, want to remain in the community, again, would support projects like this. They don't tax our overlay as much as maybe a family starting out, may have a family starting out that would tax our actual, our actual town budget more than just an average person trying to stay in their home. So it's a way to equal a balance for them. And this was the request of the taxpayers for us to try and support this for them.
I just want a quick question. No, wait, you cannot.
So this is not fair?
That was, yeah, that was two thousand twenty-five individuals that, yes, forty-nine individuals in our community received exemption.
So that's thirty-one disabled veterans?
Your disabled veterans that you have is thirty-one total.
It's sixty-three percent. That's not fair.
Unfortunately, the law, the law says you have to offer to the all.
I understand. That's, your question isn't pertinent, whether it's fair or not is not pertinent. So you're done. Please sit down.
I need one more.
No, sit down.
What? I'm a former U.S. Marine. I have to be one of the disabled veteran she's talking about?
Would you please sit down? You can run. Thank you.
One quick question. Is this Marlon Math five ninety-two, figure eight, four hundred, ends up at two ninety-two?
I don't know where you are.
I'm on this page here, the recap page. At the bottom, you're going to get four hundred thousand dollars. You started off with five hundred ninety-two thousand dollars as a balance, you're giving them four hundred. And you're going to end up at two ninety-two?
Oh, we're not giving the four hundred. I took that off of another article, proposed article. So it is, so we're not giving the four hundred, right? I think you can go that off tonight. So the balance that I'm talking to you about now is what I've stated earlier. That is five ninety-two, six fifty-five, and seventy-six cents. The rest of it is not.
So this is an accurate?
What's accurate is the number that I'm giving you, five hundred ninety-two thousand, six fifty-five, seventy-six. You can disregard the math of the four hundred thousand because we do not.
Any other questions? Okay, we're now going to vote. Once again, make sure your voting clicker is on. And voting starts now. Voting stops now. It passes, yes, eighty-five point zero three zero percent.
I move that the amount of ninety thousand dollars is hereby transferred from fiscal year twenty-twenty-six certified free cash for the purpose stated in the article.
Any questions?
This is the water project. Right, we're recommending ninety thousand. Do you have something to refer to, might you address that?
So is that always the plan, that the ARCA funds were only going to be given to that spot?
Yes, because at the time when we were moving the ARCA fund to a other, people didn't want to use the ARCA fund for things like wells, so we didn't want to pick up all the ARCA funds. And also, at that time, we weren't sure what we were going to be connecting through the ability to play. And we didn't sure the library, the annex, whether or not we built it. We just rated so that other people got a chance to use the ARCA fund. But we should have knocked at least take the well and install.
Any other questions? Once again.
Just real quick, so generally from the Board of Health, you said that this figure of a hundred thousand dollars also equates to what we could potentially have connected to the new building which we voted down? Do you have an estimated figure on what that removes in money from this hundred thousand?
Do you have that? He's saying no. But the motion is for ninety thousand, not a hundred. So use your math, tell me what you think.
Is it ten?
I don't know. I can't. Yes, sir?
So the question I have is, since the town hall is going to get its page windows removed, is there a value of hooking up the annex? Really? And what would that do to this number?
I just don't understand. You don't want the people in the annex to have drinking water? I didn't understand what that?
Doctor, we got, why would you invest on a building? No, we, from my understanding, the annex sounds like we're kind of abandoning it. After we get the windows and after we get the windows?
With your position, GDP is big pressure, right, public water supply?
I didn't know that.
We're behind, and thankfully we're not finding it. But if we don't hook them up soon, we will start.
If we start with the hall, do all the stuff to the hall, then the hall can be used for offices or not? Not the?
That's enough. Please sit down.
I appreciate it. I didn't know it was important.
Yeah, just like, can you get the horn out there too?
Yes, sir. So, so, just talking about the hookups to, the line has to go through to the library anyway. So I wouldn't expect that there would be a huge reduction by removing scope of work to tie in the annex. Certainly, the town hall, there's, you know, a need for it there, especially given the vote tonight. And we're going to have to continue to maintain that property. But the other thing too, this work has to be bid. It's very well that we could get a, you know, a bid or vote that comes through that's below that dollar. So it's a necessity, has to be done.
All right, Joe, can you reread the article?
I move that the amount of ninety thousand dollars is hereby transferred from fiscal year twenty-twenty-six certified free cash for a purpose stated in the article.
Can I ask Chris about bidding issue? Because this is just a change order to the contract that we're currently using to do the work. So we're not bidding, and it's a change order, changing scope. And we're adding the additional work on to the contract.
I would have to look into it further. I think that may be true, but I don't want to.
Quickly. So the contract forms, the river water line to the town hall and the annex, those are now not included in the contract price?
They are included.
Yes, you just said they're not.
Oh, I never said that. Everything is included. Someone asked me if I could back out the cost to hook up the hitchcock building, said we're not buying the hitchcock building. And I said, no, we can't back that out because they don't know specifically what that is. But we're still hooking up the other three blocks.
Okay, but there's water line on the contract right, so two buildings. You should have a water line has to be provided. For a water line.
That's good. I think you understand now.
Correct, so I don't think it's a ninety thousand dollar change.
Please sit down. Yes, sir?
That's me, Miller. He's from, he wrote. So the Board of Health just said this is a change order, so he has a price for this, which is, and, which is a hundred thousand dollars. FinCom is requesting ninety thousand. If the cost of the job is a hundred thousand dollars, where does that other ten thousand dollars come from?
I can address that. I have estimates that add up to ninety thousand dollars. I asked for a hundred thousand dollars because we also need a water filtration system. The well has iron in it, it's dry, right? So I don't have a specific estimate for the water filtration system. So I asked for an additional ten thousand dollars to cover the water filtration system. And they're saying because I don't have an estimate, they don't want to give me the money.
I'll just say that's not exactly correct. We were given estimates for hookup for eighty-five thousand dollars and requested a buffer up to a hundred, and that's why we thought a five thousand dollar buffer was sufficient. The water treatment system was not, was not brought forward to us.
All right. We're going to call a vote now, please. Simple majority. Voting starts now. Voting closes now. Eighty percent yes, one hundred percent no. And the article passes.
Article, article nine, I want to defer to the petitioner.
Okay, what we did was, this was, this started off in the annual town meeting as a citizen petition. At the time, it was, because it was unclear how you would reduce the number from five to three. And when we had this meeting coming up, they, the folks who were, we discovered that we couldn't, you know, put it out here to get off the table. We had it going on, and they, it's its own separate article now. So we really did knock the sponsors, the folks sent the petition to us saying we'd like to do this. And we didn't want to take a chance of saying they refused to put it out because they didn't want to reduce the number, so we put it out. So if there's somebody here who's part of that citizen petition and wants to speak to it, then it should go to that, or those individuals.
Mr. Seawick.
Richard Seawick, Hall Road. I wanted to speak to this article, although it's past my bedtime. Because I have specific information about the number of selectmen. The first meeting I attended was in nineteen seventy-two. I have served as town moderator, chair of the finance committee, chair of the cemetery commission, chairman of the town chair, and hardening. Recently voted me for my eighth term as the trustee of the town library's trust. I have seen an awful lot of selectmen come and go. They come with good intentions, they work very hard, they get burned out. But I know, and I will tell each one of you, that five selectmen is too many. It's too many for very simple reason. They can dither, they can dither, they can debate, and then they could go home having done nothing. And they will be very happy to blame somebody else on that podium because it did pass. That's not the way it should be done. Three selectmen can be held accountable for their actions. If two decide it is the thing, it moves. If none decide, it does not. But everyone has a say, and you know where they stand because they had to say it out loud in front. If you don't like what they do, they can be voted out. But in the meantime, work can be done. At the time now, when there are too many selectmen, and I have to forgive you for that. But it cripples the ability of that board to do its work on your behalf. Three people, hold them accountable. If you don't like them, vote them out. Thank you.
This will come as a surprise to my friend, Mr. Seawick, but I agree. I agree with Mr. Seawick on this because, not necessarily for the same reasons, but we always hear about transparency, and nobody really knows what anybody means when they say that. Because everything, pretty much everything we do, it happens in public. However, I will say this, I, going back, and I wasn't on the board when this went to five, but going back to when this was being debated and being sold as the perfect thing to do with five. There were actually people who were above the board at the time that said, this will be perfect because I can talk to Paul, and then Paul can talk to Crystal, Crystal can talk to Tom, and Tom can talk. And they think that that's not a violation of the old meeting law, but it is, because you can't round robin like that, okay? That's not legal. If, if I go out after a meeting and there's three members, okay? Paul and I, and then we start going, ah, you know, we should do this, or we should, that's a violation. and we start going, ah, you know, we should do this, or we should, that's a violation. Because two of us can no longer sit down to talk about that outside of the public eye, okay? And I think personally, that the issue of going from five to three makes a lot of sense for a town of our size. I know other towns have changed to five and then turned around and brought it back to three because they found they were having some problems with having the five-person board, okay? And I say that as somebody who's spent a day or two on this board, so this is something that I think we should seriously consider changing this, and over time, just allowing it to drift down to three. And you know what doesn't happen here? If this, if the town hall votes to reduce the number to three, we have to then petition the general court in Boston, and they have to pass special legislation to authorize the town to go from five to three, just like they did when it went from three to five. So I couldn't agree more with you, Dick. And now we can say we did agree publicly with you.
Who knows that kid?
Hi. Suzanne Collins, 59 East Hill Road, from Hill. And thank you, Dick, because I agree with everything that Dick has to say. We have 270, 70-plus cities and towns in Massachusetts, and those towns that are 4,000 or less have three select board members, except for one, all right? What it will do from going from five to three will improve efficiency among the members. It's also going to decrease costs for the admin person, and plus for stipends for training and other administrative costs. There, like Dick said, there's going to be clear accountability, so we know where everybody stands. And when we go to the voting hall that next election, we know who we're going to vote for, and people do have to be accountable. Transparency, there should be more transparency there, because you're not going to be able to have any deliberations outside of the meeting. They will have to deliberate right in front of everybody, so you are going to have transparency. It's a better fit for our small community, because it, sometimes it can be difficult to find enough qualified select board people, although we, we've had great ones. So three works much better for a smaller committee. It also encourages stronger civic involvement, too. People are going to get out there, they're going to campaign. People are going to know who they're voting for, rather than it's somebody's friends. They're going to know who they're voting for. So it's going to encourage the candidates to become motivated, to campaign more thoroughly, so they know who they're voting for. So a three-member board also can provide cohesive leadership on our board, and as our community, that's what we want. We want cohesive leadership. We do have cohesive leadership right now, and I do admire the work that the board has done, and I know doing an awful lot of work on the finance committee. So I encourage people to think about going from five to three. Thank you.
Can you come on here, please, so we can see you? I've been told you can't be seen on the camera if you're in the back.
So with all due respect to.
Your name and address.
Dave Leesich, 1130 Dunlop Town, Brinkfield. With all due respect to, to Marty and to him, I respect your opinions on this, but my concern is that if we drop, back down to three select persons, that basically, an informal voting block of two essentially can run the show. And I, I think that at five, we've at least got a little better shot at true representation. So that would be my concern.
Sorry, I didn't see this.
37 Palmer Road. I would be interested to see if any of the other active members of the board are willing to express their opinion on this.
There are pros and cons to either decision, right? And you heard some great arguments for both. It's up to you. Either way, you have, you know, we have leaders that want to practice in their community civic responsibility, getting involved in their community. There's a lot of heavy lifting, meaning there are a lot of projects that we take on, and there's a lot of work that happens with, that you don't see all during the week. Phone calls, you know, to connect with people, to find out their opinions on different things. Not these guys, we're not, I'm not doing that, but I'm calling Eva, is that Eva over there? I need to talk to you tomorrow, by the way. Seriously. But, but things like that, right? And so we picked up all these projects that we have to work on, so I'm thinking like, okay, well now three have to do that. I've thought through this, and I've thought, how about three with like a town administrator, a town manager, right? It's going to cost you money for a town manager. However, on the flip side of that, if you get the right town manager, they should be outward-facing, and they should be bringing state funds to Brinkfield. That's what that town manager should be doing with a three-person select board. But again, we're going to have to come to vote, and you guys have to vote to spend money on a town manager. I'm not that confident that that'll ever pass. So, so therefore, you know, I, I'm willing to do what you all want to do. I think there's pros and cons to the three person or the five person. It's kind of where I sit. I'm new at this, right? So I'm listening to the people that have been around, too, who probably know better than I do.
I went on the record for the first annual meeting as in support of this. I am still in support of this, and no disrespect to this board, but this isn't working. There is a lot, there are a lot of bad things going on. I'm going to be honest with you. I feel like as soon as they're made, that I have, I have no privy to. I also feel like a, a group of three would bring a better commodity to the town hall itself, because there are departments, there are department heads, there are boards, they just don't know where to go to help, because they think they have like five bosses, and they just don't know. So they go to one, and they don't get the answer. They go to the next one, they go to the third one. So I think three people, I think it's going to, it's going to bring these groups together, these departments together, these department heads together. And I still think, you know, I know what the, the con is, people feel like they don't, they won't have their voices heard, but I, I disagree. I think if you have three people's ear, I think it's better than five at this point, because this, this is not working for me. I'm just, I'm being completely honest with you, this is not working for me.
Well, I'd like to say, it's kind of like what Tom said, you know, it's really up to you. I mean, we try here and work hard, but as we can see tonight, I know we're on the same board together, but shutting people out and not letting them talk pisses me off. Because you all have a right to say something in a respectful manner, not to raise your voice or anything like that, but like tonight, I just, what I witnessed is disgusting. I would love to resign right now, but you guys voted me in here, and I want to try to do the best I can and give transparency, and sometimes it doesn't work.
And I will echo that.
It just, it just doesn't work. And we're trying, whether some people see it, they don't see it, it, it is a lot of work. And, and until you sit here, don't judge everybody. So if you want to sit here, then we can judge you, but until then, don't judge us, because we, we do try, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for your, make the best of it.
Move the question, please.
I'm the fifth selectman, and I can echo, working with Marty years ago, there were three of us. Yes, we battled, yes, we discussed. When I was chair, we were all together or all against, but we're in between. I thought it worked very, very well. And I agree with Crystal, it's very hard to be able to get everybody information, to feel that others are talking about you or articles you're not aware of. So I think it's a good book. I think you're going to get good people, good representation. So, you know, my opinion is yes, we need to reduce it.
Matt Timber Woods, 26th Washington Avenue. I will play devil's advocate for both of you, because while a lot of us believe that moving to a three-person board as compared to a five may work, or staying at a five may work for a fair reason. The problem with this article is that there is nowhere written in that they're transparent. Now, they can stand up there and say, we're going to be transparent, but there's no reason why they can't be transparent right now. It's not about just what they're able to do, because that is important, right? That's even a vote and getting things situated, but it's also about ways of being heard. What's, where here does it say that moving to a three-person board is going to get anyone's voice heard? Where does it say there'll be more discussion with communities? There is an option for a three-person, unfortunately, it's not written out in a way that is going to be helpful. We should really just vote in people who are, who want to work together, and vote people out who do not want to work together. Until we have a board clear about what we should do with a three-person board, we need to have our board work together to accomplish the things that this town needs, because there's no reason why at five people, they, they can't already be doing that. That is on them, and I respect the amount of work that you all do, and I respect that there is conflict, but there will still be conflict, and we will still be heard equally as we are now, because there's nothing that says three is going to be more definitive and clear and focused than it is at five. So until they, or whomever brings forward an article on how we should move forward with getting us that clear communication and focus, and how we're going to structure meetings, and how we are going to delegate their five-person work into three people, it's not something that we should just jump into, because we believe it should or shouldn't. We need to maybe have more discussion on it before we decide that some people's voices might not matter as much, because there's nothing that says that we're going to matter. So I appreciate that.
We were actually on, like I remember, the way it went from three to five. Some of it was for practicality of having a forum, some of it was for practicality to get, you know, you have two people, and it just seems like if you're all in the same line, you get voted the same way all the time, and there's no devil's advocate. I like have, I know it's frustrating, but I like having a devil's advocate, instead of having things, like you said, we always agreed, like you even said, we always agreed and pushed things through, and it made things easier. Well, it doesn't have to be easier, it needs to be the right thing to do. Transparency, I apologize for what you just said. We had five on the board, we had streaming, we had people coming up, and I don't think we can get more transparency. We tried to distribute the workload. We had people, Mike and I were on, and Michelle. Each one getting assigned who they were going to work for, what jobs they were going to get, and that was very clear, they brought it to the table all the time. Now, you should never have discussions, or you should never have something that came before and seemed to be passing without your input, is why I think that's, that is disturbing.
All right, so I'm going to say this in closing. Honestly, I don't think that our town's issues are that complex. I really don't. They're not that complex. Where this town is in trouble is communication and respect. I carry around my resignation letter. This, we have to respect each other. We have to listen to each other. If I disagree with someone, I'm going to tell him to his face that I disagree with him. If someone has an issue that I'm not coming to enough meetings, come say it to my face. Communication, with the state or this country, we need to communicate and respect one another. So that's all I'm saying, and I'm sorry that I, if I'm being harsh, but I, I sit on this board, and I can't make a difference. So when you ask me if we should go down to three, hell yeah, because this ain't working, and, and maybe your board did work. Maybe you should consider running again. It's so frustrating to sit here and see people dicker and not respect one another, and I'm going to get off my soapbox. I'm, I'm, Mr. Murat, do you answer your question? I'm all for the article.
We're going to move the question and vote now.
It's the same people all the time doing this, though.
I'm sorry.
It's the same people doing dicker, and causing the trouble all the time.
All right, enough. We're going to vote.
It can, it can, it can change.
It should change, but if not, because then the following people don't do it.
You know what? Then we're not, then we're not, we all have the same goal. We all have the same goal.
Yeah, but same people causing the trouble, we should get a call, they're coming when they got three, or they got five.
All right, enough discussions.
You should, you know what? Sorry, I would, I would encourage you to run down.
All right, we're going to vote. Make sure your voting flicker is on. Click your icon. Okay? Voting starts now.
The article fails. 52% no, 37 yes. Back here.